Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Dean Logan. I'm the Registrar/Recorder County Clerk for Los Angeles County. Really appreciate you coming out tonight for our Election Administration Plan hearing. I will get into that in just a little bit to talk about how the presentations and the hearings are going to be conducted tonight. But first, I'd like to, on behalf of the Registrar/Recorder County Clerk's Office, thank LA County Library for making this facility available to us. We have used this facility before for early voting here in Lancaster. It's a great facility and appreciate being able to be here. And I'd also like to introduce, to make some welcoming remarks, Charles Bostwick, who is with County Supervisor Catherine Barger's office. He'd like to welcome you on behalf of Supervisor Barger and share some additional information with you. So, Charles.
Hi, I'm Chuck Bostwick. I work for LA County Supervisor Catherine Barger, whose district includes the Antler Valley. I work out of her Lancaster field office, so I spend most of my time in the Antler Valley. So I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. There's lots of changes coming up in how we'll all be voting next year, and we're interested in hearing what you have to say about it. And I also want to tell you that we will have a further, more informational session about the new voting system coming up in January after the holidays and shortly before the March primary. That will be 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on January 15th, which is a Wednesday, and that will be here as well at the Lancaster Library. And we'll be making sure that we get more information about that out to voters in the Antler Valley in the coming months before the January 15th meeting. So again, thank you all for coming out tonight and letting us know what you think.
So, again, this is a public hearing on the Election Administration Plan. And just to give a little bit of a summary of what that is, the Election Administration Plan is the document that's required under California Elections Code to describe the manner in which the county will do outreach and education around the new voting model that we are introducing in 2020. Hopefully, you have had a chance either through material and demonstration tonight to get some information about that new election model. About four weeks ago, we held a mock election throughout the county in 50 locations, including College of the Canyons, where we opened up vote centers and had the new equipment available and gave people a chance in the community to use the equipment and learn about the new model. That was the kickoff to our outreach and education campaign. That will be continuous now, continued activities to raise public awareness and to demonstrate the equipment through now and the end of January as we lead up to the opening of the voting period for the March 3 presidential primary election, which will be the first election in which we use the full model of the new voting experience here in Los Angeles County. So the draft Election Administration Plan, which we're discussing tonight, was posted on October 9th on our website and has been developed to describe, again, the strategy to administer the elections under the California Voters' Choice Act. And the California Voters' Choice Act is legislation that was passed in California that allows a local option for counties to opt into moving to the vote center model of conducting elections. So moving away from the single-day, single-location voting model to an 11-day voting period where voters in the county can go to any voting location in the county to cast their ballot prior to the election. In addition to that, here in Los Angeles County, in addition to the Voters' Choice Act, we've also been, for the last nine years, working on what is known as the Voting Solutions for All People Project. And that is the development of the voting equipment that you see here demonstrated tonight and a number of services that will be made available at those vote centers during that 11-day voting period, and you'll hear more about that this evening. The plan is available and accessible in 13 languages on our website. We can also provide printed copies on request, and it's open for public comment through November 19th. This is one of five hearings that we're conducting where we're doing presentations and taking public comment, but we also are taking public comment a number of additional ways. We're taking public comment by telephone, by email, and also through an online portal through our website. So the first thing on our website at lavote.net is a description of the plan, downloadable copies of the plan, and there is a portal where you can go in and submit public comment there as well. We'll obviously be taking in-person comments this evening as well. The presentation you'll see tonight focuses on the key points of the Election Administration Plan. Details on the various topics can be found in the actual plan itself. Our meeting tonight will be conducted in a true public hearing format, so we ask that you please hold your questions until the public comment portion, although given the size of the audience tonight, we can be somewhat flexible in that. But we want to go through the presentations and share the information with you first, then we'll open up a public comment period and allow you to share information or to engage in some Q&amp;A with us. While we'd like to keep it informal and conversational, we are going to ask during the public comment period that you go to the microphone over there and you identify yourself. We're recording the hearing tonight, so that just allows us to keep a full transcript and record of the events that are happening. And if you're so inclined, if you know at a certain point that you do want to make public comment, we do have public comment forms that you can fill out at the table here. Again, given the size tonight, we can be really flexible with that and open up dialogue. I mentioned that the public hearing is being recorded and will be posted on our website later. That's just simply to give us documentation of the proceedings tonight. And I would also like to note, I think many of you have already had the chance, but we do have a demonstration unit of our ballot marking device available for you this evening. So after we finish the formal part of the hearing, if you would like to try out the equipment or have it demonstrated, we can provide that opportunity for you as well. And we have a number of staff people who are here to answer questions and engage with you throughout the evening. I'd like to, before I turn it over to our project manager to start the formal presentation tonight, I'd like to share just a very brief video with you that is a report out on the mock election that I mentioned that we held four weekends ago. This is just a summary of kind of the feedback we received from voters and a little bit of a visual depiction of how the mock election took place. And after that, I will introduce our staff and we'll go into the formal proceeding.
The machine was pretty good, man. I liked it. I think it's so much faster and easier to just press and click the screen rather than punching something.
It's literally a touchscreen with instructions that are easily understandable.
This is as simple as ordering food at any restaurant on one of those terminals that they have.
Now it's all incorporated in the one machine where if you don't want to just do the screen, you have issues hearing, we have audio. If you're blind, we have a touchpad that will help you through the process. So all those things, so we're covering all the bases of people with all kinds of disabilities.
It wasn't as intimidating to use as, you know, the piece of paper with everything on it and worrying about, "Am I missing something?"
I thought that the process was very easy, very streamlined, and I think our younger generation will be excited about it, too.
I think they're going to like it more. It's going to change completely. It's like a different ballgame. The borders in LA County should be very excited about the new changes.
So that was just a quick taste of how things went in the mock election. I should also note that this last Tuesday here in Los Angeles County, we conducted local and municipal elections in 12 jurisdictions throughout the county, and we did pilot the use of the ballot marking devices in those polling places as well. So that was the first time that they were used in a live official election. So we got similar feedback that we got in the mock election. The combined experience from the mock election and the pilot from this Tuesday's election will enable us to kind of refine our processes and procedures and be well-prepared for the full launch that's coming out in March, or actually, the vote centers themselves will open in late February for the March election. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. We have a number of speakers this evening, but I'm going to turn it over first to Monica Flores, who is our Administrative Project Manager for the Voting Solutions for All People Project, and she will kick things off and then pass it along to the other speakers this evening. Thank you again for being here. Your participation and your feedback is really important to us.
Good evening, and thanks again for joining us today. I will be providing you an overview of the Voters' Choice Act, which Dean introduced a little bit tonight. The Voters' Choice Act was signed in 2016 by Governor Brown. It allows an expanded, provides an expanded number of options for our voters to vote. Currently, voters have two options to vote. They can either vote by mail, or they can come to the polling place on Election Day. In the future, thanks to the Voters' Choice Act, voters can continue to vote by mail, but they'll also have the option to vote at any of the vote center locations throughout the county over a period of 11 days. They're no longer restricted to vote on a Tuesday. Furthermore, voters have the opportunity to register to vote at any one of these locations. Prior to transitioning to this new model, counties must prepare an Election Administration Plan, which is what we're presenting to you today and asking you to provide feedback on. The plan covers topics such as our outreach plan, vote center placement, and election security. We publish the plan on October 9th, and the public comment period ends on November 19th. Again, you can comment here in person, or you can give us a call, or you can comment online as well. We intend to submit this final plan to the Secretary of State by the end of the year. These expanded options for when and where voters can vote are just one part of our new voting experience here in LA County called the Voting Solutions for All People, or as we call VSAP for short. The VSAP introduces a completely new way of voting. Voters now have access to new tools to make their voting experience more convenient, accessible, and secure. Some of these tools include a new interactive sample ballot and a new ballot marking device, which a lot of you interacted with. And to facilitate this experience, we, as election workers, will be using a new electronic poll book to check in voters, and we will be using a new tally system to count all those ballots that come from our vote centers and in the mail. Furthermore, the ballot for those who prefer to vote by mail has been redesigned to be easier to understand and use. This new vote-by-mail ballot was introduced in November of 2018. It was designed with the voter in mind. We designed it alongside with voters with a various range of abilities, including voters with limited mobility, dexterity, and vision. Additionally, we will be implementing a new remote-accessible vote-by-mail tool, which allows voters with disabilities to mark their ballot using their preferred assistive And as we already mentioned, in the future, voters will have the ability to vote at any vote center over a period of 11 days, providing a lot more flexibility and convenience. We seek for these places to be at locations that are easily accessible to our voters, so we conducted a lot of research to identify these locations. That research was conducted as part of our Vote Center Placement Project, which we'll hear a little bit more about today. To gather potential vote center locations, we looked at our current inventory of polling places, we held community meetings, we conducted public surveys, and established an online suggestion platform. You can see the full list of vote centers in the Election Administration Plan, and if you have further suggestions for locations that may not be listed, we continue to welcome those. You can, again, contact us by phone or online. Once at a vote center, voters will be checked in using an electronic poll book. These e-poll books will replace the large voter rosters that are currently in place. E-poll books allow us to verify voters' eligibility and to mark that they have participated in an election. They also allow us to verify that voters haven't voted at another vote center or haven't submitted a vote-by-mail ballot. E-poll books will also allow us to spoil a vote-by-mail ballot for a voter that may have received one but prefers to vote in person. Finally, e-poll books will allow us to register voters and allow them to cast a ballot on that same day. E-poll books expect to greatly reduce the number of voters who cast a ballot provisionally, as currently, the reason that voters usually cast a provisional ballot is because they're at the incorrect location or they don't have a vote-by-mail ballot to surrender. So both of those instances just go away with the implementation of an e-poll book. Also new to this experience is the interactive sample ballot. This component has drawn a lot of attention and excitement from our voters. It allows a voter to mark their sample ballot in a digital format, either using their home computer or their mobile unit, such as their tablet or cellphone. And what it allows you to do is save those, save the voter selections, produce a code that then gets scanned at the device. It'll populate the selections, expediting that process, so the voter can verify their selections, can make those selections, can change those selections, and can then cast an actual paper ballot at the vote center. This optional tool, this is an optional tool for voters. It does not replace the need for voters to visit a vote center and mark an actual ballot or to mail a vote-by-mail ballot. Voters who do vote in person at a vote center will be marking and casting their ballots on an all-new ballot marking device. The ballot marking device is designed to be easy to use, accessible, and secure. It allows a voter to make their selections using a touchscreen interface or the tactile keypad. If you were able to vote on it today, you would see that you can actually customize your experience. You can select a language, you can change a font size, screen contrast, and so forth. Also allows a voter to listen to an audio version of the ballot. All voter selections are printed on a paper ballot, which a voter can verify before casting. No selections are stored or tallied on the ballot marking device itself. It's not connected to the internet or any network while it's at the vote center. The device is designed to be accessible to voters with varying physical and cognitive abilities. It allows all voters to mark and cast their ballots easily, securely, privately, and independently. The last component to this full voter experience is the new tally system. The new tally system is used to scan all of the paper ballots. It tallies the ballots, and then we report results out from this tally system. And I will end with a video overview that explains this in a succinct manner.
The election is just around the corner, and Los Angeles County has a new way for voters to make their voices heard. New Los Angeles County vote centers are located throughout the county. Cast your ballot near your home, work, or favorite park. Voters can go anywhere. To find a vote center that's convenient, visit lavote.net and find one that works best for you. Instead of waiting for one day to vote, you are now able to vote across 11 days. Once you've arrived, a vote center assistant will greet you and check you in before taking you to the ballot marking device. Did you know that there is a new interactive sample ballot that lets you pre-mark your selections online and generate a poll pass? A unique QR code that will let you quickly transfer, review, and cast your selections on a paper ballot at the county vote center. The new ballot marking device includes an audio ballot, a touchscreen, and a tactile keypad to make voting faster and more accessible. You can also select your language, change the font size, and adjust the contrast for easy viewing. Then, after you make your selections or scan your poll pass, you can review your ballot to verify your choices and cast your ballot by feeding the paper ballot back into the ballot marking device. There's no need to give your ballot to a vote center assistant. You cast it on the same device. Welcome to the future of voting in Los Angeles County. Fast, convenient, and easy. Go to vsap.lavote.net to exercise your right to vote and let your voice be heard.
So as you can see, this is a completely new voter experience, and it is critical that we share this information with all of our voters. So we've had a great amount of partnerships with media. Today, my colleague Tarina is going to share with you a little bit about this media campaign and what we're doing to get the word out to our voters.
Thank you, Monica. Yes, we have a very big message and a large task ahead of us, and so we basically have to educate over 4, 5.4 million voters and an additional 1 million non-registered eligible voters. And so in the EAP, you will find more details on our plan, so I'm just going to go over an overview of what we plan to do to communicate, promote, and educate everyone on the accessibility tools, the new ballot marking device you see here, as well as where voters can go to cast their ballots. And so part of our plan is to saturate every media market by utilizing partners that we've already established relationships with in past campaigns. One of our biggest elements that we've utilized is radio. And so we plan to have on-air radio advertisements on AM, FM, also utilizing digital platforms such as Pandora, Spotify, and iHeartRadio, in which we have more ability to target our audience. So we'll also utilize television through commercials on several big TV networks such as ABC, CBS, Fox, NBC, as well as cable broadcasting networks, and digital media as well, meaning websites, phones, emails. We have just over 1 million emails, so we'll definitely be doing an email campaign as well. We'll be utilizing outdoor media, billboards on popular freeways, bus shelter ads. Buses themselves will have our message, our branding, signs on them. We'll use print media, newspapers, magazines, a variety of multilingual, multi-ethnic outlets. And we'll also be utilizing direct mailings. We'll provide at least three mailings to every registered voter, notifying them of all these new changes, where their nearest vote centers will be, and any optional tools that are available to help them learn more about VSAP. This next slide shows an example of the type of video clip that will be shown on television, social media, and our websites. This video was from one of our partners that we utilized in our previous campaign that we mentioned, the mock election that was held in September. This individual is a representative from Coast 103.5. He's a show host along with Ellen Kay, and he's on air in the mornings. So this is an example of what we'll be showcasing in the months to come.
Hey, it's Ryan Mano from the Ellen Kay Morning Show on Coast 103.5. You know, LA County has revolutionized the way you vote for the 2020 elections, making it easier and more convenient for everyone to vote. So the new ballot marking devices all have new adjustable touchscreens to make reading, marking your ballot, and casting your vote completely hassle-free. Adjustable font size, your choice of 13 different languages, an audio headset, and a control pad, which gives you all the tools of simplifying the voting process, which saves you time. All you have to do is show up, make your selections, print, and cast your vote. Boom, done. Plus, over 1,000 voting centers will be available in 2020, and you'll have 11 days to vote at any vote center near you, whether it's near your job school, shopping mall, maybe a grocery store. You can kiss those days of long lines and confusion at your voting center goodbye. To learn more about the new and improved voting experience, go to coast1035.com/lavote.
So as you can see, Ryan Mano was one of our celebrity endorsements that we used. And what we've learned in past several elections and campaigns is that not only is the message that we have to convey very important, but also who is conveying that message. And so we definitely will be using celebrity endorsements in our future campaign to help amplify our message. Another method we utilize is holding media roundtables. We also did this leading up to the mock election, where we had over 20 media outlets, English and multilingual. We provided them with information, and then they also had a chance to experience the ballot marking device, take pictures, do video clips, and it was even had an opportunity to interview our department head, Dean Logan. And so some of the benefits of that roundtable are that they're able to have featured stories. And so they can now produce this and broadcast on their own networks. So we're going to continue to host more media roundtables, even targeted roundtables consisting of different ethnic groups focusing on various demographics. We are then invited to a lot of their events. Sometimes we're cosponsors, and this gives us another opportunity to bring out our ballot marking device, our outreach team to events in which we know that there'll be hundreds, even thousands, in attendance. So now I'm going to touch on what we're currently doing to continue the momentum from the mock election. And so we basically started demonstration centers, 10 of which are located throughout the county, each month on a rotating basis. And so we set up new sites. It will be going through January of 2020. This is an opportunity for us to set up in areas where we know there'll be a high-traffic volume, giving us even more opportunity to reach people and allow them to have an opportunity to, again, interact with the ballot marking device, as well as the e-poll book, so that they can get familiar, since this will help to expedite their process in checking in in the future. To date, we've participated in over 300 events and/or conducted presentations to specific community groups. And at these events, we're also providing materials similar to what we have here today. We always make them available and encourage them to take materials with them, share it with them and their communities and networks that they utilize, as well as taking out our ballot marking device, giving the public even more opportunities to interact and get more familiar with what's going to come in the future. And so lastly, as we get closer to March 2020, we'll be providing and creating materials for people to utilize and share. So anything that we produce as a department is open for public consumption. If we have a video on our YouTube channels, on our website, social media posts, flyers, posters, anything that we create, we strongly encourage everyone to utilize these, share within their communities. We'll be storing all of this on our website, so please be sure to check our website at lavote.net in the upcoming months so that you can also use these materials and post them on your websites and share them as well. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Outreach Manager, Jeff Klein.
Okay, so I'm Jeff Klein. I'm going to talk a little bit about our community engagement and our outreach, and this really complements the media plan that Tarina described. Obviously, the media reaches a much larger population, but really, for more effectiveness on the ground, we have a very advanced peer-to-peer outreach campaign that's constantly evolving and constantly growing. I'm going to run through this. There's a lot more information in our Election Administration Plan that you're free to review, and if you have any comments, we'd love to hear back. So just to give a little bit of an overview of what's been going on, over the last year and a half, we've done a number of in-person VSAP presentations, over 300. We're actually getting close to 350, but over 300 VSAP presentations. And these are presentations to city councils, other government agencies, but also community groups, varying sizes. We've attended over 500 community events separate from the VSAP presentations, and the community events are more opportunities for us to distribute VSAP materials, interact with the public. And at some of the community events, we have brought out our ballot marking device for members of the public to try out and get that first, that on-hands experience, and we've been able to learn from how individuals also use the ballot marking device. Overall, we collaborate with 88 cities and 200 community-based organizations who are networked. These are our regular partners. This is, there's more than 200 organizations that we've worked with, but our consistent partnership, and I do recognize some friendly faces here today, so thank you very much for being here. A little more about what we'd like to call collaborative outreach. LA County is a very large county, as everyone here probably is aware. It's the largest voting jurisdiction in the nation by far, and really, in order to be effective with our outreach, what we do is we implement what's called a partnership model, and allows us to partner with the 88 cities, 200 organizations, and any other entities. Could be an individual, or it could be a network of individuals, and really to get our message out and be most effective throughout the community. Because of the size of LA County, even if we had an outreach team that was five times larger, it would still be very difficult for us to reach all corners of the county. So what do I mean by collaborative outreach? Well, what we do is we have certain demographics or certain parts of the county that we target, or maybe specific audiences that we feel can effectively carry different messages, and we really identify organizations that work within those communities. One thing also, we'd like to share the experiences that we've learned along the way in the form of best practices. Organizations will call us and ask us what would be the best way to get that information out into the community. We established a VSAP ambassador program, and we've had a number of organizations take advantage of this. What the ambassador program is, is organizations come in and will train key individuals so they can go out and they can host their own VSAP presentations. they can go out and they can host their own VSAP presentation and help us get our word out, and really allow people to get a hands-on experience with the ballot marking device, more information. And nothing beats that interaction that you get from using the ballot marking device, so I do want to encourage everyone in this room afterwards to stick around and use the ballot marking device if you haven't had an opportunity to yet. We also look for opportunities of greater engagement. There's a lot of work on sort of a one-to-one basis with organizations, but there's also a lot more that goes on throughout LA County that offers greater opportunities. We mobilized our community-based organizations for mock election. We had 50 mock election sites, as mentioned, around LA County, and we looked at organizations that operate in communities where mock election sites were established. We contacted those communities, or, I'm sorry, organizations in those communities, and we contacted them and let them know, "This is your mock election site. Please help us mobilize the public and get the word out to bring people out to those mock election sites." As mentioned, we have 10 demo centers throughout LA County. They've been very successful through the month of October. We're now into November. There's a number of locations. You can find the locations on our website. But the great thing about the demo centers is they've offered opportunities for organizations to get people over and get that hands-on experience, so they can see what the changes are in 2020. In addition to the ballot marking device, we have an e-poll book, just in the demonstration mode, but individuals can come out and see what the e-poll book would be like, and get other information similar that you see here tonight. We've started partnering with representatives, elected officials, cities, and then also community organizations to set up town halls, and these are large events. You can think of them as a combined outreach event plus a demo. So, this brings large, maybe 100, 200 people out to all here en masse, all the information and all the changes, and use the ballot marking device. In addition to working with community organizations to really get our message out, for LA County to be really effective in getting the message out into all parts of the county, we have to work through a variety of different organizations that specialize in language support or multilingual assistance. We provide assistance in Armenian, Chinese, Cambodian, or Kamai, Farsi, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, Tagalog, or Filipino, Thai, and Vietnamese. We also provide additional assistance outside of the translated services in Bengali, Gujarati, and Urdu. And so, the language support is both in what we produce to serve the public, so all of the materials that we provide on VSAP are translated into those languages. But in addition, we work with organizations to really help us get the word out to various language communities. And as you can see on the left, even our "I Voted" sticker is translated. One thing that we look at when figuring out how we're going to serve limited English proficiency voters, we look at our partnerships as described. We combine that with data, census data, voter data, and we put both of those items together to know where we can best serve voters around LA County, where we would want to target our language support services. Although, the great thing about the ballot marking device is regardless of where you're at in LA County, you can get your ballot translated in your preferred language. But in terms of how we want to effectively use our resources, partnerships and data really combine to help us do that. Also, in addition to language support, we have accessibility support for voters who need additional assistance. Just to run through a list of accessible services, vote-by-mail was actually, it's on here because it was enhanced to be more accessible. We have the Interactive Sample Ballot, as Monica described, or ISB as we call it, Remote Accessible Vote-by-mail, RAVBM for short, and the ballot marking device is fully accessible, and accessibility was one of the main components that we really studied when developing the ballot marking device. Just a little more about the improvements around the vote-by-mail ballot. It's a larger, what we call a full-face ballot, easier to read, easier to fill out, easier to understand. It's a lot more intuitive. That's the number-one word that we've heard from voters who have been very happy with the changes we made to the vote-by-mail ballot. It's available in all the multilingual options that I had mentioned earlier. One of the big changes, although this is outside of accessibility for the most part, but no postage required to return vote-by-mail in LA County. And also, we'll institute a vote-by-mail dropbox program, so voters will have three options to return their ballot: in person at a vote center, by mail, or they can utilize one of the 150 vote-by-mail dropboxes throughout LA County. And that's a little more on our support around outreach and working with organizations. And I'm going to bring up Julian to talk a little more about our vote center placement project.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Julian Capata, and I work with Placeworks. We partnered with the county to help them find the vote centers. We've been talking a little bit about the changes to the voting experience, and the vote centers is one of the big changes that's coming up. So, in order to determine the best place to locate the vote centers, we started with a database of over 7,500 sites, actually over 10,000, but we narrowed it down to 7,500. And then, we prepared, we worked with a polling firm to prepare statistically valid phone surveys. We contacted over 2,500 people to get opinions on where they would like vote centers to be, what a vote center should be, what features a vote center should have with regards to accessibility, safety, lighting, things like that. We also conducted eight different focus groups throughout the county, and those focus groups targeted a range of registered voters, non-registered voters, eligible voters, as well as different demographics, age, and ethnic ranges. After the surveys we did, or while the surveys were going on, Placeworks conducted a desktop review, which basically consisted of contacting this about 7,500 different facilities to determine whether they would participate in the vote center process, and if they met the basic qualifications. If they met that qualifications, we then put them onto a list to go visually inspect. We also did a significant amount of outreach through the various public agencies. We coordinated with each of the 88 clerks throughout the county, as well as various county and other city departments, such as LA County Parks and Rec, LA County Libraries, and things like Los Angeles City Parks Department, to find the best available vote centers with them. In order to get public input beyond just the public polling and the surveys, we also developed an online vote center placement portal, which was available on the county's VSAP website, and members of the public could suggest a vote center. They could review potential vote centers that were already on the list and provide comments on that. Through this process, as you can see, we received approximately 1,700 different comments and recommendations. And then, also as part of this process, we did two rounds of community engagement or surveys, conducted over 67 grassroots meetings with the assistance of community-based organizations. We did one set of meetings prior to our, while we were going out and reviewing the various sites to, again, throughout the county, to get opinions on what facility should be a vote center, where a vote center should be located, what you liked, what you didn't like. And then, after we had developed our database of 2,000 vote centers, we had another round of meetings to inform people on what these 2,000 potential vote centers would be. And again, these meetings, people were allowed to suggest potential vote centers, provide comments on the potential vote centers that were identified, and we received over 900 comments with regards to either our potential or recommended vote centers through that process. We did conduct a very extensive field review. I've got another couple of slides on that, so I'll give more detail. And we also developed a geospatial tool that helped us determine the best 1,000 of 2,000, and I'm going to talk about both the field review and that tool in these next couple of slides. So, as part of, you know, we did our surveys, we did our desktop review, phone calls, and all that, but the heart of this was to go out, and we sent teams of people out to over 2,300 specific sites, and we investigated them for parking accessibility, ADA accessibility, would the power supply meet the needs of the county for a vote center? Were there any barriers to access that could not be overcome or mitigated for? And we did this down to like measuring doorways to make sure that they were all wheelchair-accessible, and laying levels down on the ramps to make sure that they met ADA accessibility. And then, just for further record, the county's going to go and do another step of that, but you know, ADA accessibility was a big portion of that. So, approximately 84% of the facilities we visited met the acceptable range. They were put into our database of potential sites. And then, we took the 2,000 sites that we evaluated to the conditionally suitable, and we ran that through a geospatial analysis tool that provided weighting for what were the most characteristics of a potential vote center. The California Voters' Choice Act has certain requirements that the county had to meet with regards to making sure the vote centers were close to population centers, making sure they were accessible to people who were coming home from work, that they provided opportunities for low-vote-by-mail communities, for all socioeconomic and ethnic communities. And so, we, with the county staff and the technical and community advisory committees, determined what the appropriate weighting should be. This weighting lines up directly with the results we got from our survey, that most people wanted to vote close to home, most people felt that safety was a major factor for a potential vote center as far as election integrity. And so, we came up with our list of 2,000 sites, or 1,000 recommended sites throughout the county. As you can see, they are located primarily in the dense population areas, but we did want to make sure that all communities were represented, so we have several in some of the less dense areas, not just, for example, in the Amal Valley, out in Little Lake and some of those areas, as well as, you know, in Lancaster, Palmdale areas. So, these vote centers are now going through the next stage, which the county is giving them an even higher level of review and bringing them onboard, and I'll let the county talk about the next steps. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julian. My name is Aaron Navarez. I oversee our governmental and legislative affairs with the Registrar's Office. And as was mentioned previously, the vote centers is a significant part of the new model that's implemented, or we will be implementing, through the Voters' Choice Act and through our Voting Solutions for All People. And as Julian mentioned, well, Placeworks did an initial assessment on all of the vote centers. What our department is currently doing is a more significant assessment to make sure all the sites that will potentially be used meet all the accessibility requirements. Additionally, we need to ensure that they meet the appropriate power and network assessments that we need to have, both for the ballot marking device and the electronic poll book. So, that work is happening now. What you'll see in the election administration plan is approximately 1,200 potential sites that will be used moving forward in the March election. As has been mentioned several times tonight, we continue to receive feedback on additional location. Many members of the public have additional locations that they think might be suitable for vote centers. We would welcome that feedback, again, through one of the comment portals that we've mentioned. Let us know tonight if you think there's an additional site. In many ways, some of the sites that we often hear is, "How about this site?" It may have already been excluded for a number of reasons, but the fact remains is that we always want to get feedback and input from the public on additional sites that should be considered. So, our expected completion date of all of this is December 31st. Our team at the Registrar's Office is currently actively working to secure these sites. Again, it's a significant agreement that we need to come with a potential vote center to utilize the site for either four or 11 days, and that work is ongoing as we speak now, to ensure that we have adequate number of sites for the rollout in March of 2020. Our goal is to have approximately 250 vote centers 10 days before the election, with another 1,000 vote centers to open up again that final four days. So, again, it starts at E-minus 10, so 10 days before the election, we'll have about 250, and then the weekend before it ramps up. An interesting part that the Voters' Choice Act allows for, and something that Los Angeles County pushed for very heavily, is a mobile voting program. This will allow counties like Los Angeles, in which we'll be employing a mobile voting program. And what this looks like is a couple of different ways, specifically in geographically isolated areas. So, as Julian mentioned, there's some areas, perhaps in the North County, that are geographically isolated from other areas, where it might not make sense to have a full vote center for 11 days, but in some ways, perhaps we can have a flex vote center go out on a number of days to certain populations to ensure if they don't want to vote by mail and want access to a vote center, that we are able to do that. Additionally, we can use flex vote centers at things like homeless shelters, or convalescent homes, or assisted living centers, to ensure that populations that might not otherwise be able to get to a vote center will still have access, and that's through our mobile voting program. And then, we'll have actual mobile voting units that can go to large-scale events that might not, again, make sense to have a vote center there, because people might not be there for a full 11 days. But if there's a large farmer's market, or a sporting event, or some other type of fair, community fair, where there'll be lots of members of the public, we can bring a mobile unit out, and it'll actually allow voters to vote where they already are. Again, one of the hallmarks of the Voting Solutions for All People is to meet voters where they're at, and that will be done through our mobile voting program. In addition, the Voters' Choice Act allows for vote-by-mail drop-off sites. These are locations where voters who want to cast a ballot using our vote-by-mail, but might not want to put the ballot back into the mailbox. We have, through the program authorized through the Voters' Choice Act, a number of locations, again, also identified in the election administration plan, where voters can go to a vote-by-mail dropbox and securely drop off their vote-by-mail ballot. Again, you can also drop off your ballot at any vote center as well. And again, the goal is to have approximately between 200 and 250 vote-by-mail drop-offs, and those are also identified in the election administration plan. So, how will vote centers be staffed? It's important to know. And how will vote center layout? What you see on the screen here is an image of what a potential layout of a large vote center would be. One thing we learned during our mock election, as Dean mentioned earlier, we did have a lot of learnings through the mock election, was the layout of vote centers matter. So, again, this is an example of what one could look like, but could potentially look a little bit different. What we know is that we need to ensure the privacy and accessibility of voters. We know that's very important. So, how the ballot marking devices are laid out within a vote center is important, and that will, again, potentially look like this, but could have modifications to ensure we have adequate privacy. Every vote center will have a unique site layout. So, this is a potential vote center, and you see it's a very square building, easy to sort of lay out. Some buildings aren't laid out that way, and so, every vote center will, again, have a specific, unique layout that will all be documented to ensure that we're dropping off the devices, and they'll be set up appropriately. One thing to note, that vote centers will have different sizes. So, some vote centers could be small and have as many as 10 of those ballot marking devices. Some will be large and could have as many as 50 of those ballot marking devices. So, again, vote centers throughout the county, depending on the location, depending on how many days they'll be open, will have various sizes as we roll out. Staffing is also something that is very important. Many people, when they walk into a vote center, we saw this through the mock election, come in and, you know, we understand could potentially be a little anxious, or have some trepidation walking up to a machine like that. What we know is that once voters have gotten to the machine, what we've seen is that it's actually a very good experience for them once they get on it. But what we want the public to know is that we will have ample staff at all of our vote centers. Again, there will be multilingual staff at all of our vote centers in some capacity. Again, we'll use targeting to ensure we have adequate multilingual staff. But what you should know is that there'll be between five and 27 staff members at each of these vote centers, again, depending on the size of the vote center. There'll be various staffing roles, so we'll have a lead vote center worker, we'll have check-in clerks that will check voters in on the electronic poll books, we'll have various members who will do that. Again, even check-in clerks. Some large vote centers will have as many as a dozen electronic poll books to ensure we have adequate capacity to move our voters through. We'll have a line monitor. That will be someone who will almost be the first person you see that, when you walk in, will greet you. If you have any questions, we'll be able to answer those questions, let you know what to expect. Additionally, we'll have staff that will be working in the area you see next to all the ballot marking devices. We're calling those the voting area monitors. Again, to ensure that if a voter does have a question and they want some assistance, those staff will be there to assist voters. And again, while we expect provisionals to be reduced, as Monica mentioned earlier, there will be some areas where provisionals will still be needed, and we also want to ensure that voters who have a vote-by-mail ballot can very quickly go and drop off their ballot and don't have to wait in line. So, again, staffing is very important under this model, and we want the public to know that we will have adequate staffing, ample staffing, to ensure that voters who need assistance will receive that assistance. The Board of Supervisors actually passed a motion recently to recruit county employees, so county employees will be a big part of the So county employees will be a big part of the staffing model moving forward. But we will also still have a role for community volunteers and high school students as part of our staffing program. So again, it will be a comprehensive staffing program that will take members from the community. High school students is, again, a very important population that we still want to have work at our, at our vote centers. And again, county and departmental employees will be a part of that as well. And it should be noted that all election workers will receive significant staffing, or significant training on how to work in a vote center. They'll be trained across all the different roles so that they, again, if we need to move them around, they'll be able to function in the various capacities. So again, staffing and vote center layout are other elements that are mentioned. And finally, just to reiterate, comments on this are all welcome through our public comment portal. And last but not least, definitely not least, the VSAP, the Voting Solutions for All People, while you've heard a lot about accessibility, you've heard a lot about ensuring that voters have convenience and access, what we want the public to also know is that security was absolutely paramount in the development of the system. The most important thing to note about that ballot marking device over there is that it produces a human readable paper ballot. So while the interface is digital and provides convenience and accessibility and language access, what you get through the process at the end of the day and is the ballot of record is that human readable paper ballot. There are various processes throughout the ballot marking device experience where you have an opportunity to verify your selections throughout the process. Before you print the ballot out, there is another opportunity where you're prompted to verify your selections again. Once that's done, you hit print, your ballot prints out, and again, you are prompted to verify your choices. Again, you see all of your choices on that ballot before casting it. That is the number-one security process that we have is that human readable paper ballot. I should also note that at a vote center, that device is not connected to the internet, it is simply a power cable. So again, there's no connection at a vote center to the network on that device. There's secure processes and chain of custody. So every day at the end of the election day, on every single day, all of the voted ballots will be securely taken by election workers, teams of two, back to check-in centers throughout the county, and then delivered back to our tally headquarters, where they'll be tallied and tabulated centrally on a secure network. On election day, the same thing will apply, and we will also use sheriff's deputies as we do now to securely transfer those ballots back. Again, every day, the ballots will be transferred back. Our entire process is built on standards that are developed by the National Institute of Standards and Technology. We have intrusion detection of networks. So in the vote center, while the ballot marking devices are not connected to the network, we do have electronic poll books that are connected to secure networks. Those are monitored throughout the voting period. Again, this is not a network that you can go and just hop on through the public wifi. These are secure networks that are set up in advance. We have detection centers, we have a network operations center at our department, and a security operations center at our department, that are constantly monitoring these networks to ensure there is no intrusion. We work with third-party security firms to ensure that the system is as secure as possible. We are also going through Secretary of State certification testing right now, which has a variety of testing methodologies. There is a volume test, a functional test, a penetration testing. They review all of the code to make sure it's as secure as possible, accessibility testing and the like. From top to bottom, this system has gone through various security checkpoints. We work with the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI at the national level, with the Secretary of State at the state level, and again, even at the county level, we work with our Chief Information Officer and Internal Services Department to ensure that we're doing everything as securely as possible, and there's appropriate chain of custody and processes and procedures. And again, as the election happens, we work with ongoing law enforcement and other government agencies to ensure, again, the system is absolutely as secure as possible. So while the VSAP does focus a lot on accessibility and convenience, the system was not compromised at all. It was a balance of balancing security as well as accessibility, and I think through this, Voting Solutions for All People, we achieved that. And again, our commitment to its security is paramount, and you can see more information in the Election Administration Plan. So again, I thank you for your time. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to our Registrar, Dean Logan, to facilitate the public comment portion. We really do appreciate all of you coming, and at this time, I will turn it back over to Dean.
I just want to just really briefly summarize and reinforce that this process has been methodical, interactive, and intentional. So we have worked with, the whole process began through conversations with voters in LA County. So this new voting model is designed by and for the voters of Los Angeles County. But the success of the new model really depends on our ability to do an adequate job of outreach and education. Because of the size of the county and the significance of the change, our ability to communicate these changes and to build confidence in the community is particularly important. So at a real high level, from a voter perspective, this is changing from a single-day, single-location for voting to an 11-day voting period, where any voter in Los Angeles County can go to any location. There's still the option for any voter in Los Angeles County to receive their ballot by mail. And importantly, the ballot is still a paper, human-readable ballot, and that is the official ballot of record. That's what will be counted for the tabulation of the results, and that will be maintained for recounts and audits after the election. So with that, I want to thank everybody for their presentations. I want to thank you for being here, and I'd like to open up the opportunity, if anybody would like to make comments tonight, if you wouldn't mind going to the microphone and identifying yourself, or if you would like to ask any questions, we'd be happy to respond to you this evening. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I have a list, so just stop me if I... Thank you all for the presentation, very helpful information. So for the mobile voting piece, are you all taking public comment, or public suggestions on where those should be set up, or how are you all determining where those locations will be?
We will absolutely take public input on that process. The intent of that program, and there are multiple components to that program, there are the actual, the large mobile units that can go to big events, and then there are the smaller flex units that can go out into remote areas. The intent is to, first priority is to get to locations and populations that otherwise wouldn't be served through the vote center. So that'll be our priority, but absolutely, we will take public input on that process.
And is that like high-traffic events, or just remote locations?
It could be both. So an example that we use is that at the Rose Bowl Stadium, they have a very large farmer's market every weekend. It wouldn't make sense to establish a vote center there during the week, but on the weekend, there are a lot of people there. So we, in that sense, it would be a great opportunity to take the mobile unit. People are out doing their shopping or exercising, and then they can visually see that there's a place if they want to, and if they're ready to, that they could cast their ballot.
Great. And please stop me, whomever has other questions. I'm assuming that's how the folks who are eligible to vote in jail, I'm assuming that's how y'all are going to allow them to vote, those 17,000-ish folks?
Yeah, it's somewhat. So I'll comment briefly on that, and then afterwards, if you want to speak with Jeff Klein, he can tell you more about that program. We do have a voting while incarcerated program. It's a partnership with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Office. As you indicate, there are a number of people in our county jail facilities who are eligible to cast ballots. So what we do is we send teams in, and we have community partners that go in to the jails and conduct voter registration and take back ballot requests, and then we prepare ballots for them, take them back into the facility, they mark them, and then we provide a secure ballot box. We are exploring the possibility of many vote centers, like the flex units that we talked about at the jail facilities. We're not sure whether that's going to work from a security standpoint, but if it doesn't, we will continue with the... Essentially, it's taking vote-by-mail ballots into the jail facility, they mark them, sign them, and then we take them back from them.
So not yet this technology, as of now?
It's, we're looking at it, and it may be available in some facilities and not in others. Part of that's just going to be dependent on what type of arrangement we can arrange, come to agreement with the Sheriff's Office on that.
And what instance would we still, would folks still have a provisional ballot, since many of those obstacles, I'm assuming, are eliminated now?
Yes, and that's one of the things we love about this model, is the decrease in provisional ballots. The largest reason, just to give perspective on that, usually the highest volume of provisional ballots fall into two categories. Either the voter is at the wrong location, so this eliminates that, because every location is the right election, is the right location. And two, is that they're listed as having been mailed a vote-by-mail ballot, but they don't have that ballot to surrender. That's no longer required either, because at the vote centers, we can void and clear that vote-by-mail ballot and issue a regular ballot. There still could be situations where a provisional ballot would be necessary, there will be fewer instances of that. So an example would be if you came to a vote center here in Lancaster, and for whatever reason, in the system, it shows that you had already voted at another vote center. So that could be a clerical error in the checking in, so we would not turn you away from that voting opportunity, but to protect the integrity of the process, we would have you vote a provisional ballot so we could make sure that you weren't somebody who went to multiple voting centers and tried to vote more than once. So that would be an example. The same-day voter registration law that is now in effect, which will allow people who are not registered to register onsite at a vote center and vote, those ballots, while they're regular ballots, they will be held like provisional ballots until we validate the voter registration through the state database. So they will vote on the device just like anyone else, but the ballot will have to be secured in an envelope until we get that validation from the state. So those would be the two examples that I could give immediately on potential provisional ballots.
Great. I think that is it for now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
My name is Eric. I am a resident of Lancaster, a first-generation voter and a CHERLA member. I'm here to read some comments that we have written here. On behalf of the Coalition for the Humane Immigrant Rights CHERLA, I write and to provide written comments on the first draft of the Election Administration Plan, the EAP, produced by the Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder County Clerk. Founded in 1986, CHERLA is a statewide organization who serves the immigrant community through community education, organizing, and provision on legal immigrant services, advocacy, at the forefront of local, state, and federal government, and civic engagements through the immigration political power project, working to change and trends of the expected low voter turnout by working to activate our voters, immigrants, Latino, youth, and women, to become cultural voters that turn out even for special elections, not just every four years for presidential elections. First and foremost, we applaud the Los Angeles County Register Recorder County Clerk for their continued work with the community-based organizations, and look forward to our continued collaboration as the primary and general election of 2020 approach. Moving forward, CHERLA proposes the following recommendations to ensure increased voter turnout amongst low propensity voters throughout the county. The EAP highlights heavy investment and focus from the office to conduct voter education via paid media. While the increase of media is welcomed, CHERLA highly recommends the increased allocations of the funds within the outreach budget beyond $25,000 to engage in low-income, non-English, geographically-isolated, limited-English-speaking, and language-minority communities, and voters with disability communities, which are hard to engage and educate solely through media. In addition, CHERLA highly recommends further collaborations between the office and community-based organizations for the dissemination of public announcements and information. The department's plan to conduct direct contact, direct mailing, emailing, notifications, and robocalls for public service announcements is a good and strategic investment to connect with voters. However, in some circumstances, hard-to-reach communities such as low-income, non-English, monolingual, geographically-isolated, and limited-English-speaking language minorities, and voters with disabilities highly rely on these organizations due to this existing distrust between these communities and government agencies. Furthermore, the dissemination of the information via electronic means largely affects our economically-disadvantaged communities who do not have access to electronic devices, or more than often don't rely on these services to receive important information. For example, when an individual's cell phone service is cut due to lack of payment and then reactivates, more often than not, the number change, and they fail to update, and the information on the voter registration form failing to receive robocalls from the department with important PSAs. As a result, CHERLA highly recommends that in addition to direct voter contact throughout PSAs, to also include partnership opportunities with allocated funds for the CBOs to engage hard-to-reach voters. Further opportunities for collaboration include but are not limited to demo center outreach, highlighting the ability to provide public comments, attending hearings for the EAP, and education on the access of multilingual assist hotlines in preparation for the rollout of the VSAP in March primary. In addition, it is well thought out and compliant that the department voting center model is designated to accommodate various levels of participants. With each voting center is designated having five to 25 staff members, depending on the size, it is great that the county will provide up to eight bilingual speakers to fulfill the language requirement. As a result, CHERLA highly recommends the role of the line monitor to be bilingual speaker as the first point of contact for a voter should be a welcoming one, to ensure all fears of first-time voters and limited-English proficiency voters are addressed. Further, we recommend that the development of a shared list of voting centers cites staff with bilingual employees to ensure CBOs and the public have the ability to review and recommend where language assist is needed. In addition to comprehensive targeting data systems that integrate demograph data and language assist requests from multiple data sources being used by registrar, including that the United States Census, the American Community Survey, voter registration applications, and language assistance. CHERLA recommends asking CBOs and non-English-language and language-community voters for feedback on where they would like voting centers to be bilingually staffed. CHERLA thanks the Los Angeles County Register Recording County Clerk once again, and highly looks forward to our continued collaboration to ensure high turnout and increased voter participation for low propensity voters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's really valuable information. If you wouldn't mind leaving, if you have a copy of that, if you can leave that with Julian, or submit it to us online. And I should have asked the first speaker too, if you wouldn't mind filling out the speaker cards, just so we have a record of who was here. I'm not going to go through all of your items. I've taken some notes, and I know we're going to get it in writing. I did want to, I really appreciate the proactive suggestions that you have offered, and we, of course, appreciate our longstanding collaborative relationship with CHERLA, and appreciate you being here tonight. On the latter point that you mentioned, I want to emphasize for everybody's benefit that that targeting criteria for multilingual staffing is very important to this model of voting. And we do have, through our Community Voter Outreach Committee, which includes representation from over 300 community-based organizations, we have a subcommittee Language Access Advisory Committee, or LAC, that is advising us on that targeting criteria. And membership to our Language Accessibility Advisory Committee is open, so if you're interested in participating in that, or you have referrals for us of people who would be valuable on that, please share that information with us so we can involve those individuals as well. And then last thing, again, I'm not going to go through everyone, I do want to just acknowledge that we are in full agreement that paid media and radio and television and direct mail are not exclusively the way to get the outreach done in LA County. We're too diverse of a community, so we recognize the need to do on-the-ground outreach and education as well, and we will continue... education as well, and we will continue to work with our community-based partners to ensure that happens. Thanks again. Any other speakers tonight or questions or comments?
I have three more.
Okay, please. You have to tell us who you are.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know if this is on still. It is, great. Shalom is my first name, last name Bowers. So the interactive sample ballot that you fill out over the, on your phone or at your computer, is that something that can be saved and you can come back to at a later point?
It's a great question. Yes, it is. So again, that's an option for voters. It's not required. It's a service that we're making available. One of the first things when you go on the app to interact with that, it will ask you if you're using a public computer or a public device or a private device, and the purpose for that is exactly what you've just said. So if you're using your personal device and you, it's going to be a very long ballot in March. So we recognize some people are going to want to start through that process, then they may get to a contest or a measure where they want to do some more research. So they're going to want to save that and come back to it later. You, as the voter, control that, or the user of the application, control that. At the same time, we know there are going to be other voters who are using public computers or devices at a library or someplace like that where they would not want that to be retained on the device. So you make that choice, and at the end of that interaction, if you choose to, you can save that, or it can wipe it out of the device. So you have the option on that.
Can you talk a little bit more about how the ballots are, get to the secure location?
Sure. So again, approximately 1,000 vote centers in the final four-day voting period. At the end of each day, when those vote centers close, the vote center staff will unseal the ballot box that's on the back of each of the device, take out the voted ballots. They will secure those in transfer carriers that includes a transmittal sheet. So they will physically count not the votes, but just the number of ballots that are in the box. They will record that on a certificate with a seal number. That'll go inside the box with the ballots. They'll close the box, seal it with a tamper evidence seal. They will take those, two election workers, so they're always in shared custody and always in a sealed container, they will take those to a check-in center, and at the check-in center, a sheriff's patrol will pick them up and bring them to our office in Norwalk, where we will store them securely. And then they won't, and then when we open those transfer carriers, we're verifying the seal that's inside the box. So we have a full chain of custody, and then we will, that's where we will scan the ballots. We won't be counting any ballots until after the polls close at 8:00 on election night, but that will happen every night. So it's important for people to know that 1,000 locations, but voted ballots do not stay there overnight. Every night, they come back to our headquarters.
Last question. So the voter databases, PDI, TargetSmart, those platforms, because we don't have polling locations anymore, so if you're going door-to-door for GOTV work, for instance, and you're telling someone where their polling location is, how are you all communicating the locations to those sorts of companies for campaigns?
Yeah, so a couple of things in that. The locations themselves will be publicly available, the full list of locations will be publicly available. There'll be a number of ways to access that, both manual things, like on your sample ballot that you receive in the mail, we will list the location that's open for 10 days that's closest to where you are, as well as two or three locations in the final four days that are close to where you are. You're not limited to those, but we recognize that people rely on the sample ballot, so we want to give them locations close to their homes. Then we will give them information where they can by phone or online access the full list of locations. There's some discussion, there hasn't been a decision on this yet, but there may be a separate mailing that is simply a full catalog of all of the locations that goes to households. We will also have an app, so if you want to, wherever you're at, using GIS technology, wherever you're at during that 11-day period, you can say, "Show me where the closest vote center is to where I'm at." That'll be an option. And then the other thing for GOTV, which you may have been referencing, I'm not sure, but I'll share with you, is that campaigns often send people to the polling locations to, on election day, to see who has voted, and so they can start calling their supporters saying, "You haven't voted yet. You need to get to the polls." That will now be available on a real-time basis on our website, so campaigns can update their lists as they go through, and they can do their targeting in that manner. So they won't have to go to the individual locations to do that. They'll have access to that electronically.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership on this since 2009.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. If not, I will close the official public hearing, and thank you for being here. I want to, I said this at the last two hearing, this is the third of five hearings that we've held. Please don't be discouraged by the turnout. This kind of dialogue is really important. So the issues that have been raised today, we have a record of those. They will be available. We know that people are going on and looking at the videos of the public hearing, so it's very valuable to have this interaction, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Our staff remains available, as well as the device, if you'd like to try it out, or if you prefer to ask your questions informally of our staff, we will stick around and be happy to engage with you tonight. Thanks again for being here.